All right, welcome to our Planning Commission meeting. We're gonna go ahead and get started with our opening ceremonies with a pledge by Commissioner Galt and a prayer or moment of silence by Commissioner Hepworth.
Would everyone please stand and join me in repeating the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we are very grateful to come before Thee today as a Planning Commission and members of the great city that we live in. Heavenly Father, we ask that You bless this company, that we may be able to have the interest of the city and the citizens at heart, and that we may be able to calmly hear the opinions and the input that is wanted to be shared. Heavenly Father, we ask that You watch over those that are in harm's way, those military and first responders, that they may be able to be watched over and protected. And these things we ask and pray for in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, moving along to actions on the minutes from our previous meeting on November 13th. Do we have any changes? Edits?
I have just one under seven says, where it says Melinda and Jeff have it be Commission Member for both of those. That's it.
All right, anybody else? Anything else? Okay, with those changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve.
A second.
With those changes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Reed and a second by Commissioner Hepworth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and do we have anyone online?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't hear anything. Melinda and George, did you guys accept the minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And how about you?
I gave that an aye. I think I was muted there.
Okay. And Commissioner Simpson? All right, well, we've got. Yeah. We've got, okay. We'll go with that then with Commissioner Lamar online. Okay, with that, the minutes are approved. And then, was there any nays? Maybe that's what I was waiting for. Okay, didn't think so. Okay, we're moving along. We're gonna go to actions by City Council. Amy, do we have anything to report?
No, because of just the, the, um, the schedule. There wasn't a Planning Commission meeting.
Oh, that's true.
Well, and City Council did not have a City Council meeting the first week of December, so.
All right, well, with that, we'll keep moving along to Agenda Item. All right, Agenda Item number five, Public Hearing. And we just want to welcome you all here tonight. We appreciate your attendance and your participation. Don't be afraid to step up to the microphone if you have some comments that you'd like to make. There are some rules of decorum for public hearings that are on the second page of your agendas. We encourage you to look through that. We want to hear input, and we just need to follow decorum, so we appreciate your following those guidelines. So, first of all, Amy, do you want to give us a little rundown of this rezone request?
Actually, I'm gonna introduce Stephen Nelson. He is our new Community Development Director, and he's the one presenting tonight regarding the rezone.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Go ahead.
Stephen, how do you spell your last name?
N-E-L-S-O-N.
N-E-L-S-O-N. Thank you.
Yes, and welcome.
Yeah, I'm really happy to be here. So, the rezone request that's in front of us today is for approximately 9.88 acres. It's located on 3600 South, kind of, kind of near the intersection of 3500, 100 West and 3600 South. It is, oh, there's two property owners, so it's the Hancock Family Trust and the Starkey family who own the two properties in question. They have come in together to file for a rezoned, to rezone from A2 to R2.5. Within the staff report, you can see I provided a little table that indicates some of the uses and other zoning around the property. It's primarily around the property is currently A2, but there is some R2 as well. And so, the real purpose and differences between the two zones, currently A2 require, is a much larger density, what typically requires one single-family dwelling for every two acres with a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet, and with the primary purpose of the zoning to be agriculture. The R2.5 is more dense. It's, it's still a single-family zone, but you'd be looking at approximately, they could do up to about 24 units on the property, maybe a little bit less due to some of the lot restrictions along, lot size restrictions along the boundaries of the property. And so, you'd be looking at, so essentially, you would be allowed to, sorry, I'm still a little new with the code, so I have to look at my notes. The R2.5 would allow no more than two and a half residential units per acre with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, with 16,000 square feet for lots contiguous to A1, A2, or R1 zones, which would apply if this zone change were granted, since the surrounding zones are A2. The general plan map has this area, has this property listed for R2.5. So, staff would recommend approval based on the general plan map, and there is a suggested motion within the staff report. Are there any questions?
Any other questions before we enter public hearing?
So, just to clarify, this would, we would be, they would be limited to 16,000 square feet because it is bordering A2 on either side?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to enter public hearing.
So, moved.
So, moved, okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Reed and a second by Commissioner Galt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. I gave that an aye.
Thank you, thank you. Just want to make sure everybody's accounted for. Okay, it's all in favor, so we will go ahead and move into public hearing. Anyone either online or here in person, you're welcome to step up to the microphone. We just need to step up, introduce yourself, give us your address, your name and address. We usually limit comments to two minutes, but feel free to share your, and if you do have questions, we write them down, and we will answer them when we're, when the public hearing is committed, is completed, so.
So, this is off 3375, right?
I don't know the exact address, but it's a couple blocks up from 3500 West. Is that where you're?
Yeah. So, if you look at this little map.
Can you introduce yourself and give your address first?
Lindsay Sorrentino, 3722 South, 3375 West.
Most of that's just for public record, so that when it gets translated, we know, so.
That's fine. So, we actually live on the east side of that square. Dennis is the first house, I'm the second house, and Nancy is on the corner. We have some worries about. Pardon? South side, sorry.
So, yours is the long stripe south of there?
Yes. We're right there, the very first house.
Where the mouses?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, my question is, is the street gonna go straight out from, are 3375 gonna go straight out to 3600? Or is it gonna have little zigzags? Because right now, we have a problem on 3800. Buses, delivery drivers, people from the apartments and the townhouses fly down that street, and I have a feeling that if that's coming off 3600, we're gonna have the same issue. And that's a big problem, because there's a lot of, a lot of walking traffic on our street.
But right now, it's a, it's a dead end.
It's a dead end right now. It ends at the field.
Okay.
So, um, anything else? Okay, anyway, I have two other things. Are we gonna get a grocery store? In West Haven? And how about a post office? I know right now, we share the zip code with Ogden, and I, my old job was tax compliance, and I know sales tax revenue goes to whoever's zip code it is. So, if you don't put the four-digit extension, any sales tax revenue from any new business or old existing business is gonna go to Ogden, not to West Haven. Something to think about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dennis Bochard. I live at 3714 South, 3375 West, which is right at the south end of the parcel that they're referring to. My question is, is where will the alternative egress be? Or are they planning on putting another entrance in and out of there? Anybody got any ideas? Because if you come in from 3500, you're gonna be talking, you're gonna be involving two other landowners.
Coming from 3500 to the west, is that?
Yeah, if you come in from 3500 West, there's, there's two parcels in there that could actually be an egress, but you'd have to get with, it'd have to be the people that are on that, uh, four-sided piece of property that the canal goes through, and then the neighbor to the west of the parcel. So, I was just, my, my question is, will it require that there be another egress for that many homes? Does anybody want to?
Yep, we'll answer that when we're done.
I'm sorry?
I'll say, we'll answer these questions after the public hearing, so we're writing these down and.
Okay, because that's, because that's a concern, Lindsey and Nancy and all, well, everybody that lives on that street or in that subdivision has that same concern of the, the increased traffic and, and, uh, by, by putting that in there. So, I don't, the, because I, because I can't imagine, you said like 24 homes?
Could possibly be up to, up to 24.
Up to 24 homes, and the lots would be?
16,000.
16,000, because that's almost a third acre, which is a good-sized lot. I mean, I, I'm glad it's not the high-density stuff that we've got crowded around us now, because then we run into parking problems, dog problems, and other things as well in our neighborhood, coming from the, that currently come from the east, down 3800. I mean, it's, it's, uh, particularly entering into the, those, into those apartments and those high-density homes that are there. We get people parking clear up and down the road, and that's, that's not something we wanted to have happen, and I'm glad to hear there at least, at least third acres. That'll, that'll be a lot of homes for even third acres. Because you've only got, you've got about, how wide does, how wide's the street? How many feet does a street require? You've got about 100, you've got about 100 and, uh, or three, I think it's 300, about 309 feet wide. And so, but third, and then so, then you've got about 800, eight or 900 feet north and south. There's about 8.8 acres in there. Because my concern is the second egress, if in fact there is one to be required, and I believe there would be just for, just for safety reasons. So, in that event, the little house on the corner, the north, the northwest corner of that parcel is probably gonna have to go away. In my, I mean, it's gonna put a single widow out of a, out of a, out of her home, but she rents it now. So, anyway, that's, that's my concern is, is a second egress, and where will that be? And like Lindsey said, will that just be a straight road down further to the, to the east? There's another subdivision that they've put in, that they put kind of an S curve in it. I can't remember what that subdivision's called. Mary Ellen or something.
So, um, so we've kind of.
Anyway, that's, that's my, that's, that is my concern, is the speed of the traffic, the amount of traffic that'll be even with just 24.
Okay, thank you. We've got our, we're kind of going over our time limit, but thank you. We've got your notes written down. Thank you. We haven't started the timer, because we don't have a huge crowd here, but we're just kind of try to stick with two minutes if we can. And if there's a repeated question, that's maybe someone else to say, I agree with what, you know, a person before you said, just to kind of conserve time. Thank you. Anyone else?
My question is regarding the, the impact on schools.
State your name, sorry.
I'm sorry?
State your name and address, please.
Uh, you can call me Good Citizen. I don't wanna.
Pardon me?
You can call me Good Citizen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that okay, Amy, or can we do that?
You need to identify yourself with your address on, for the record, please.
And if you don't, yeah, it's if he wants to get, can he just give it to Robin if he doesn't want to say it out loud, or?
Yes, and then it can be read into the record.
Kevin Sessions. I don't want to give out my address. That's my own personal, have the right to the Fourth Amendment.
Not sure that exactly applies. Okay, um, do you, are you a resident of West Haven?
Yes. So, my question is, we, we just built this, Weber County just built this huge 200-plus million-dollar school. What's the impact? Has there been any field studies with the additional kids that these new homes might be taken apart in the new Weber School District at all? Sorry. It's not a Q and A dialogue, sorry.
Okay, yeah, it's, okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, with that, if there's no other comments online or in person, we'll go ahead and exit public hearing if I can have a motion.
Motion to exit public hearing?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hepworth and a second by Commissioner Reed to leave public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carries, so we are out of public hearing, so we will go through these questions and answer them. First one about the road, the egress.
So, we really can't address the road issue, the, or these, because that's not what's in front of us. The only thing that's in front of us is the rezone. And so, the design of a subdivision and what that will look like, that will come if they, you know, if they do a subdivision application and bring it in.
Okay, and that might be good to address, too, that, you know, this is just the first stage in the process. The rezone comes first so that they can legally rezone their property, and then they can meet with the engineers and design their subdivision, then they come back with those plans.
That would all be in the master development agreement, and I mean, it's gonna have to get signed off by fire department, city engineer, you know, Weber Basin Water, all that stuff that's gonna have to, I would, I would assume that, that that's all gonna be taken into consideration when, when they go to do the design and.
Well, all of the, I mean, that is a good assumption, because all of that does have to be taken into account, and, you know, whether or not there's, there needs to be any type of, you know, detention basin, that, there's all sorts of different factors that could go into the design of what a subdivision looks like, and because we don't have that, you know, here in front of us, there's just really no way for the Commission to address that. Much like the, the question about, you know, the kids with the school, we don't control the, the school district, so no, we can't answer that question either, because the school district has their own, that, they, they end up doing their own studies, they has to, you know, that type of, of things, so there really isn't, you can't really address that question either. What was the, the other?
Or the post office.
Yeah, the post office, we have no control of.
I have no control over the federal government whatsoever.
As for the grocery store, Walmart came in to, to get preliminary site plan approval a month ago? The first of November. So, that's in the process, but we have no control over that either, as to whether or not they actually come or not, they own the property, and they can do what, you know, they can either develop it or not develop it. I mean, they have parameters as to what the, the city code says, but right now, they are moving towards getting it approved, and so, is there one more?
Just talking about like home demolition, things like that, those are things we don't have control over once a landowner, and it's their right to develop their land, as long as, and we approve things based on the consistency, and if they're consistent with our general plans, so to respect their rights, you know, we try to follow the general plan as, as much as we can. We don't really have control over what they, you know, as long as it fits the criteria of the development agreement, as far as like tearing a home down and things like that, that's up to the landowner and how they decide to lay out their plot. And that'll come at a later meeting, which there won't be a general, there won't be a public hearing for those, but you can kind of follow the plan as it goes. And even though there's not a public hearing later, at a later time, you're welcome to send emails to either City Council or to us. There's just not a public setting to kind of address those things, those concerns. But our basic element tonight is to see if this is consistent with the general plan and to take into consideration if there's information or situations that might need to be considered. I'm trying to think, width of the street, those are things that'll all come into play later with the subdivision development. Anybody else have any notes that we need to address? Those are just all I had. Anybody else?
No, I mean, it, it seems like most of their concerns is just the egress and the, the traffic that's gonna be incurred, but even with, if it would have stayed A2, you're still gonna have street access if they decide to develop it at A2. Granted, you might not have as many homes, but there's still gonna be some sort of road that access those homes if it stays at A2. But like Commissioner Roundy said, it's, it's, our main goal and, and purpose is to, to make sure that what the rezone request is, is meeting with the general plan. And, and so far, this looks like it, it fits the criteria to, to meet that, that, with the zoning.
And I do know the city tries to connect, have connectivity, so we don't have a lot of dead ends and, you know, different, you know, trying to connect the subdivisions, as long as it's not becoming a traffic issue. So, I know in general, there is kind of plans sometimes to feed into different areas that are undeveloped. I'm not saying that that's going to happen, but, you know, I know in the past that they tried to do that.
Yeah, and I might just add, our subdivision code does have street and cul-de-sac requirements, so like a cul-de-sac can only be a max of 650 feet long, and this property itself is well over that, so anything that goes beyond that will have to have some sort of additional connection point.
The chances of it being a dead-ended street are pretty slim to none.
Yeah. We're not designing the subdivision, though, they will have to comply with our code, which there are some things that would encourage connectivity.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I've got a, a comment about the general plan. I know the city started the process to relook at the general plan, and one of the things that I heard very clearly from a lot of citizens as we took public input on that revised general plan, was that there was a, a strong sentiment that, that as we revised the general plan, we wanted to retain as much of the agricultural and rural areas as was feasible. And because we're still in the process, and I understand there were some delays on that, but nevertheless, the, the, the process has begun to revise the general plan. And I'm conflicted with, with saying that, yes, this rezone complies with the general plan, when that general plan is being revised and citizens have said that they want to retain agricultural and rural areas. I don't know how the final product revised plan will, will be. Maybe this will, I mean, I have no idea what it will, will be like, but I'm, I'm a little bit conflicted between relying on that existing general plan in this case.
Okay, noted, thank you. And as of now, even though there might be some changes in the general plan in the future, and we, we ask public to come out, we should have some, when we, and I think now that we have Mr. Nelson here, that'll be probably our 2025 project is to look at the general plan. So, watch, for notifications, watch the city website if we have an open house to discuss the general plan. We want input, we want everyone to give their feedback, and so, that would be a great opportunity. As of now, we have to rezone this based on what the general plan is existing right now, but it's not to say that different parcels and different areas of the city might have some, some changes as well in the future, so.
Yeah, I, I understand Commissioner Galt's point, but we can't exactly put everything on hold until we get it done, because how long have we already been on hold?
A year and a half now.
Yeah, so, we can't just shut down the whole city until we get it done.
I would say that would be my recommendation, is we're, we're working on providing some sort of roadmap to get the general plan approved and updated at this point, but we're still gonna be a little ways off of that.
Okay, anybody, any other comments? Discussions? All right, with that, I'm ready for a motion. If someone's ready to give a motion.
I make a motion to recommend to the City Council to approve the Hancock Family Trust and Starkey rezone of parcels 084470001 and 084470002, finding the application confirms, conforms to the general plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hepworth and a second by Commissioner Reed. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any nays?
Nay.
Okay, with five, let's see, online, did we get two online?
Did you get mine, Becky?
Oh, we got it, okay.
What about George?
Did we get George? Okay. Okay, so with four ayes and one nay, motion carries, and this will be recommended to the City Council.
George.
Oh, did we? I kind of moved forward without, with a non-vote.
Oh, I don't know what happened there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I gave an aye on that a couple of times.
Oh, thank you, George. We just didn't hear your booming voice, so. Okay, so that gives us five ayes and one nay. Is that correct?
Yep.
And with that, the motion carries, and so, this will be recommended to the City Council. Okay, then we will move on to Agenda Item. Agenda Item number eight, solicit input and to the Second Amendment to the Westwood Estates Development Agreement. Do you want to give us a preface on that, Amy?
So, about a year ago, this, the First Amendment to the Westwood MDA came to you guys, and it had to do with Phase One, and basically making some clarifications regarding the lot development standards. So, in, I'm not sure if you guys saw it in December of 2023 or January of 2024, but the MDA was pretty vague with lot development standards. It says, lot size and width setbacks, building height, lot coverage and cul-de-sac lengths for each lot shall be a set forth in the city ordinances for some similar-sized lots and as may be shown on the plans. Lot size shall be based upon the total buildable area for such lot, excluding any easement areas shown on the plans encumbering such lot. And so, with the First Amendment, we dealt with all the, the phase, all the setbacks for Phase One, but we still had phases 2A, 2B, and 3 that needed to be dealt with. And the big reason is so that staff doesn't have to guess at the, at the setbacks, that it's outlined clearly, and, and everybody's on the same page, the developer, the city, and so, it just makes things a little bit more clear. It also added in, made it applicable to, the first phase was bought by, is bought by a different company, and so, it just says that they're gonna be bound by everything, too.
Okay, so there's no changes, per se, but just?
No, it just, and the setbacks that are outlined in, that are outlined very much follow what we did with the First Amendment.
When you say they very much follow it, is there some degree that they don't follow it?
Well, there is a lot more lots than there were in Phase One, and so, that's, hold on, just a second. I don't think that there's really anything, and I'm not sure if Eric Thomas or Tyson is here to be able to speak to.
Okay.
Because I don't think that they're any different than Phase.
Tyson Lund, 2637 North, 400 East to North Ogden. If you look at Schedule Two, all of, so in Phase One, I guess, and maybe it's easier to look at. So you have an idea what the subdivision looks like in the plats that are attached as part of Schedule Three. If you look on the north half of Phase One, past that corridor road that was dedicated to the city that's going in, those are smaller, the six thousand square foot lots. The big difference between Phase One and Phase Two is there is no smaller, or Phase One and then Phase Two and Three, there is none of those smaller lots. And so there, no, there's not, there, it's exactly the same as Phase One, in our opinion.
Thank you.
Do we have, do we have any other questions for Mr. Lund before we go into public hearing? If not, I'm ready for a motion to enter public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Galt.
Second.
Let's see. By half a second, by a millisecond, a second by from Commissioner Hepworth. Okay, so we're now in public hearing. If anyone has any comments, questions, we are happy to hear from you, whether online or in person. Just introduce yourself and speak into the microphone or raise your hand online. Anyone online, Robin? This one's kind of straightforward, so maybe not as much to address. So with that, without any comment, I'm ready to leave public hearing.
Move to leave public hearing.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Reed and a second by Commissioner Galt to leave public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's unanimous, so we are out of public hearing. Any additional discussion or questions? I think Amy explained everything pretty well. Just kind of more of a, kind of a, not a logistical, but a housekeeping, yeah, that's what I was wondering too, so. Keep things legal, right, Amy? Keep it all simple. All right, since we're out of public hearing and there's no further comment, reading down to the staff recommendation if somebody would like to give us recommendation or a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make that motion. I make a motion to recommend approval to the city council for this second amendment to the Westwood Subdivision Master Development Agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Galt and a second by Commissioner Reed. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We hear loud and clear. Perfect. We got everyone. Okay, any oppose? Okay, it looks like it's unanimous. We have everyone, so looks like the changes are approved. This doesn't have to go to city council. Looks like it's just by staff, correct, Amy?
Yes.
Just reading through there. Okay, perfect. Okay, now we're going to move on to agenda item number nine, another public hearing. This one is to solicit input to consider an amendment to certain standards for sign regulations. I think this came up in our last meeting a little bit. We were gonna address this tonight. Amy, do you want to explain this?
So I know that you guys would be super excited to amend this this sign ordinance yet one more time. But so two of them are, again, just some housekeeping, that the change to one fifty-seven point seven five nine permitted signs, that the maximum area is fifteen percent of the square footage of a single wall surface. The the language in red is what is being requested to be changed, along with taking out maximum sixty square feet. As we found in the last meeting, there's a number of businesses that it just doesn't make any sense with some of these very large buildings that are being built for commercial, that that's, you know, having a maximum wall sign of sixty square feet is just not very big, and staff believes that it's, the doing, making this change would be beneficial to both the city and the commercial businesses. Same with the one fifty-seven point seven five nine, Section Q, adding the maximum fifteen percent of the square footage of a single wall space, single wall surface, instead of just saying the square footage listed above. It just makes it a little bit more clear. We've I consulted with Dan Tanner, our code enforcement officer, regarding just being able to clarify that so that it makes it easier for him to be able to enforce anything. Then there's the, something that we found with the enforcement provision in one fifty-seven point seven five six, there was a discussion of variances, which is is problematic because if a person who comes in and wants to get something different than what our code outlines when it comes to a sign, that that throws it into, it way it reads right now is that it would be a variance, and frankly, it probably would never ever be granted because of how strictly applied variances are. And frankly, there may be times when it is appropriate to adjust the requirements, much like what we do with what the planning commission does with parking. And frankly, having it be that it come to the planning commission instead of just it sort of appears right now that it goes to the community development director, but it's a little bit unclear, which is another reason why we made this change is so that if they're wanting to request an adjustment to the requirements, the sign regulations, they have to come to you guys, to the planning commission. And then I pulled the language from the the parking section of the code regarding if you find that there's unusual or unique circumstances or conditions related to the operational characteristics. So those are all things that, you know, you look at when you look at parking, because there are times when you want to make adjustments to the parking. Same thing with here, and that, but you'd need to make findings if an adjustment is made. So it just is more basic housekeeping to try to clean up some of this language and make it more clear regarding the process.
Does this require us to allow?
No.
Fifteen percent, okay.
Oh, wait, what do you mean?
Well, require us to allow fifteen percent signage on any wall. I'm, my concern is if one of those walls is adjacent to a residential area, that they would have the opportunity and the right to be able to put a huge sign on facing the residential area.
Well, first of all, when you say huge sign, it can't be more than fifteen percent of the maximum footage.
No, I got that.
But it doesn't say any, it, that's not something that we control right now when it comes to our signs. We don't have something in there that says, hey, if you're facing residential. We do have nuisance, and we do have like the lighting ordinance with the nuisance, and so depending on what was going on, I mean, you know, we've had situations before when like some of the gas stations have come in, and we've put in types of mitigation measures so that it's and usually the applicant has been good about, you know, not wanting to be wanting to be a good neighbor and how to deal with like the lighting or how to deal with with some of those. And and frankly, you know, if they're sitting right next to residential, you know, depending on what that sign is, I mean, if, say you had a corner want, you had a drive-through, you know, and you had, you're going to want, they're going to want to be able to have a sign on like the side of the building that says, you know, with an arrow as to which way they're supposed to go for the drive-through. So I mean, but they're not going to be wanting to waste money on huge advertising necessarily too. So I I think that some of it'll be quite a bit of it will probably self-regulate it.
Well, I would think so, but this also increases, this also increases the amount of sign area that they
Change from what they currently have, though. We don't regulate that now. They could go and do that right now.
Not.
They could put a sixty square foot sign.
If you have a building that's ten by one hundred feet, the maximum size you could do is a hundred and fifty square foot.
Right, but right now it's regulated to sixty. So that's more than double is my concern if it's adjacent to a residential area. But I understand what you're saying, but I'm just bringing that up as a potential problem with saying that they can have fifteen percent.
I do think currently our sixty-foot is pretty small. Like, we even had, just this week, we had an application for a sign that was just on the side of a convenience store that we had to send back just because it was seventy-two square feet and, you know. And so, and I also think in most jurisdictions, this is a pretty common standard too, to limit based on the total size of wall without putting a huge cap, without putting a really restrictive cap on that, so.
I just don't like the idea of locking ourselves into something that could get out of control, especially become a nuisance for the residents.
Chairman Roundy?
Jeff, would you feel more comfortable if that was limited to what it currently is, a sixty-square-foot wall sign? If it's adjacent to a residential property? Is that where you're getting at?
Well, I I don't know that that's exactly what I'm saying either, to be honest with you, George. I I just, but I think, yeah, maybe that's closer to what I'm trying to get at. And, you know, maybe like they did with Holiday, they turned down the the brightness of the lights at night. I'm not exactly sure. I just don't like being locked into something that we'll ultimately regret.
Well, there's some, there's some very large businesses.
I'm sorry?
There's some very large businesses that have, you know, come to to us, and this is not a unusual size. It's not overburdensome, it's not unreasonable, and there's, there could be some real issues with limiting it to sixty square feet.
No, I understand what you're saying, and I have a pretty good feeling of what we're talking about, but last meeting, we had a a company come before us.
Two companies, actually, that have an issue with it.
Pardon?
There's, there was two companies last meeting that we, that would have, that has an issue with that sixty square feet. And frankly, because of the size of wall that they want to put it on, you know, they're not asking for, I mean, I think that the one sign was sixty-four square feet.
Right.
The other one, I think, was a hundred and fifteen. It's a thirty thousand square foot building, and so, you know, it's
No, I understand.
And that one does have residential on two sides of it, but.
That's the one I'm talking about. As a matter of fact, it would have a wall that would be allowed to have fifteen percent. And it's basically across the street from a residential area.
But you're talking like a hundred and fifteen. You know, that one, and I think was a hundred and fifteen square feet, is what they originally proposed.
Right. I don't know that they even want a sign on that wall, but it's a possibility for the future, so. I'm just bringing it up and trying to ask a question, so.
I mean, we we want to be able to protect, you know, citizens, but we also want to make it, you know, a reasonable standard so that businesses will want to be here too.
No, I I encourage businesses. I'm not trying to mess anything up. I'm just bringing it up as a I don't like locking ourselves into something. I kind of prefer us having the opportunity to grant something. I mean, ultimately, this goes to the council anyway, but that's it.
Madam Chair, I have a question about the variance language. It was mentioned that this language is is patterned after the the parking variance language. And every time we do a variance on the parking, I'm always just a little bit uncomfortable because I I like to be able to plug things into a formula and come up with something. I mean, I know that's that's a a work-related characteristic of mine, but we often say, well, here's the formula, but we're going to adjust it. And sometimes I don't know that we've got any real definitive reasons why we adjust it other than our gut tells us it seemed right. And so I'm I'm a little bit uncomfortable with this same language here because it it tells us that if it's unusual or unique conditions that we can change it. But it doesn't give us any guidance as to what would be, what would be characterized as unusual or unique. And it doesn't give us any guidance as to what we could adjust something to. I'm assuming that that this would mean we could give a variance either up or down, but you know, to make it more or less than fifteen percent. But I don't see that it gives us a lot of guidance, and maybe that's intentional. Sometimes I don't like to be bound, just like Commissioner Reed was saying, I don't want to be bound to something that I'm going to regret later, but this just doesn't give us guidance.
Do you have any suggestions or?
Couple of things. The the last sentence is not a part of the parking regulations. It actually doesn't state that you shall make findings if an adjustment is made. So you have to make findings regarding with this.
And that that is exactly my concern is because it doesn't give us any guidance as to what would be a legitimate finding.
Well, I mean, there's a couple of different things.
It does. It talks about that it wouldn't, that the parameters is that it would be equitable, warranted, and would not go against the principles outlined in the general plan.
I mean, there are times, and this is something, an example that I was thinking about is if somebody comes in with a franchise, they may have some very, very specific sign requirements because of the franchise. Like Panda Express that came in last meeting, there was some very, very specific signs that had to be put into place because of the franchise agreement that, you know, the the owner has to sign. And so looking at that type of thing, if it's off just a little bit, you know, those franchise requirements, but it would be, you know, the the project's a good fit. It fits within, you know, our zoning and stuff, then that is those type of things that would very much be, you know, you'd want to adjust it because of that, that because, like I said, those franchise requirements are very standardized, and they don't really have a lot of wiggle room.
That's a great example. I just don't read that in the language.
Amy, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I wanted to go back to the sign that Jeff was, or Commissioner member Reed was talking about. I I'm wondering if when we're talking about a sign, I'm sorry to to backtrack, but against when it's adjacent to a residential community, is that covered still under our light pollution?
Yeah, there's, there's things in with like nuisance and with the light.
Okay, as long as that was covered under that policy, I'm I'm comfortable going forward. I just didn't know with the wording if that would be covered under that, so that that makes me feel a little bit better about that.
Do you mind if I add to that?
Um, go ahead.
So our sign ordinance also has very, has strict, how strict standards about how bright and direction of light can excuse me, shine off of a sign. And so you're, you know, a sign is limited to five hundred lumens, which is or thirteen point nine four foot can, or foot candles per square foot of a sign area. And so we do have some regulations within our sign code already that are in place to try to prevent nuisances and from light pollution being shined into neighboring properties.
Thank you. Thanks for adding that. Thank you, thanks for adding that, um, and then also I, I am, I'm okay with the variances it reads, I understand, I understand the hesitation there a little bit, I also do think about the different companies we've had come in that we've had to, you know, say, sorry, like this is our hard line, you know, we can do it, we can't do it. Um, I don't know if there's a better way to word that, but I do like having the ability in those unique situations to be able to, to make adjustments so that we can bring, bring businesses into the community that the community members would like to have here. So if there's, if there's a different way to word it, great, if not, um, you know, if this is how we have to go forward, I'm also okay with that.
Amy, question, does this, is this total signage, if they have multiple signs? Or is it fifteen percent per sign? Per wall? So.
So they can only, so they can have no more than seven signs?
Okay.
Are erected in the total of all such signs for the wall is the maximum of fifteen percent.
So maybe something that would help understand what we would approve here. You have a business that's got a drive-through, if they have their drive-through menu on that wall, but they also want to put their logo above it to where it can be seen from the street. We might, they might go over that fifteen percent, but this would be a good instance where they could come to us and say, look, we want to do a sign, but we also have to house our drive-through menu on that wall.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, my, my head is on bigger walls and not the, the little drive-throughs are not normally going to be adjacent to a residential.
Those would actually probably be more likely to be adjacent than, I mean, LWE is a little bit of an anomaly, but when you're looking at some of these big ones, um, when you're looking at like Elite Customs from last week, that sits in, you know, there's more, um, commercials sitting there with, you know, because it sits right to the back of an already existing commercial business, so some of these bigger buildings are not going to be as close to the, um, you know, residential areas as, you know, some of the smaller ones.
Yeah. I don't know, perhaps, uh, George's idea is a good one, when it's adjacent to a residential area to limit it to that sixty square feet.
I, I would say if that was the direction the planning mission would want to head, I think it'd be appropriate to clarify whether or not we're meaning signs that are facing residential areas or properties that are just adjacent, because if it's just adjacent,
Right.
they could have the sign face the right of way, but it would still apply in that case.
Yeah, my concern is which way.
What happens if there's a residential across the street from commercial?
Well, I, we have, I think that's where my concern lies, there are.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying how, how, i- if we, if we word it how George and, and you're saying is that the sign needs to be limited to sixty square feet when it's facing residential?
Uh, I, I think in that case, um, in most cases, when we say adjacent, it means directly adjacent, and I think in a number of cases, we've determined that a roadway does in fact, um, provide a buffer between contiguous land usages. So, so I don't, I don't think something across the street from a commercial business uh, would be considered adjacent to it, but I think what Jeff's talking about is, and, and I think it's, um, not that big of a concern frankly, because you know, businesses typically don't advertise to the folks that are residences a- adjacent to the, to the business, they're advertising to the traffic that's going around them, you know, with their signage. Uh, but I, but I don't think it is unreasonable to say, okay, let's, let's make something that's reasonable for the folks that are directly adjacent and contiguous, uh, property so that, you know, we don't have some sort of a offensive, huge sign in someone's backyard, for instance.
But again, we put this in, and like with LWE, you know, that's, that's going to be an, an issue. Because right now, because of the way that it's zoned, um, the sign that they, I think that they're really looking at putting in is supposed to be facing the, um, proposed road, but the, that road has not gone in. And so, they would be adjacent, directly adjacent to a residential, well, I mean, I think it's an agricultural, um, lot. And I mean, in the long run with the gen- the general plan map, that area is supposed to be, you know, commercial. But right now, right now, while they're building, it's, it would be, you know, technically adjacent to an agricultural. But it's, so while I see, you know, the, the point, the problem is, is with some of these, what is it going to be in the future, and, you know, I think there are other ways to deal with, you know, the, we have the nuisance stuff with the, and the light ordinance, and, um, making sure that those things are taken care of.
I thought in the, uh, the general plan map, it was, that area was supposed to be R two point five to begin with.
No, it's.
That was, it was one of the parcels overlapped a section that was two point five.
Well, yes, he got to choose, but the general plan called for that to be R two point five.
For one of the parcels, for part of the parcel, yeah.
So.
But there's a bunch of other that is commercial.
Yeah, I, I, I think in, the way I look at it, I, I get what you're saying, and I, the, the concern is there. But at the same time, if I have a home that's next to a commercial building, I'm not going to care if there's a sign on it or not, it's going to be a big wall there. As long as the nor- the, the lighting nuisance ordinance covers me from it shining in my windows, I don't know that it would matter to me if I'm staring at a wall or I'm staring at a logo. I, I, I don't know, I just, I, I, I feel, I feel your concern, and I do, but my concern is we're going to tell a business that they can't put their logo on a building because it's facing a residential area. When we're, in all reality, they're most likely not going to do it to begin with, but as long as we're controlling it when it becomes a nuisance, then, I mean, I don't see an issue with letting them do fifteen percent of the wall space. I'd rather, I'd rather look at a logo than just blank metal siding.
A real quick question, did we do the public hearing?
No, we haven't gotten into that yet.
I think we're still introducing it.
We're still.
Okay. I was thinking the same thing too, and I was like, okay, which public hearing are we on?
You might want to do the public hearing and then, then continue the discussion.
I make a motion to enter public hearing.
Okay, yes, so you have, is that a motion, and I have a motion, a motion, Commissioner Hepworth, and a second by Commissioner Reed to enter public hearing, let's go by protocol here. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
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 You never called for a vote.
I lost him my thoughts, okay, any, any opposed? Okay, now we're in public hearing, if anyone has anything to add, or anyone in the public online, we kind of cleared out the gallery here, so. Well, if no one's online, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to exit public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Commissioner Reed and a second by Commissioner Galt, all in favor to leave public hearing?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, now we are officially out of public hearing, and we've discussed this prior to public hearing, but any other additional comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, with, with regard to live wire and businesses that, that we might have a residential area next to them in the future, I'm not too worried about that because of the principle of moving to the nuisance, and people know that before they would move there, that there's this big live wire electric sign on the building, and if it should get zoned for residential at some time in the future. You know, a- and, and again, I, um, I'm not hard over, and, and not really going to push for, like, I submit it to sixty feet, uh, square feet, but, but that's one of the alternatives I would suggest if we get hung up on this thing, is that's, that's what we're currently restricting them to, and you know, if we maintain that, uh, they can ask for a variance, and, and, you know, maybe we need to go ahead and clean up our, our ordinance on variances so that that's more palatable, um, but, and we need to do that as well, but anyway, that's where I'm at with this.
Yeah, I would be good if, uh, if we did the sixty foot limit on adjacent, but.
I would suggest that that's going to be problematic.
How so?
All the reasons that I've walked through. And I think that the nuisance and the, um, lighting ordinance will take care of it. Any issues? But I don't have a vote.
I don't have a problem with the changes, any, any other?
So Commissioner Reed, are you making a motion that we add that change to, to the, the ordinance before we approve it?
No, I was just stating my opinion.
Well, I'll make a motion to recommend to city council that we adapt the changes that staff has made to the sign ordinance.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hepworth and a second by Commissioner Stimson, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we have five ayes and one nay, a nay by Commissioner Reed. Um, with that, the motion carries, and we'll go to city council. All right, looks like that. Agenda item number ten is, I'm trying to cross them off as we go so we make sure we get our public hearings in. Okay, and then up to agenda item number eleven, another public hearing to solicit input to consider an amendment to the standards of the mixed-use medium-low-density residential commercial zone. Amy?
So, um, this is a bit of a housekeeping matter too, um, and both of these, um, proposed um, amendments are because of some issues that have come up, um, recently regarding, um, commercial, and this is completely commercial uses, this is not any sort of mix, this is, there, like, the first one is the existing commercial uses in the mixed-use zone. And there is, um, a number of, um, existing commercial uses that if they want to try to change their, um, the type of commercial, um, it's still, you know, that they're changing it from like one C one, you know, a C one activity to a different C one activity, that our current code would make it that they would have to do some type of a second, um, element, and it just really doesn't make any sense when it comes to, um, some of these, because nobody, no business is going to want to have like a trail running through their, you know, their, um, parking lot, or they've, or having some type of an open space, or that sort of thing. And, um, the twenty-first street area is really, um, one of these, there's a couple of other places in, um, the city regarding a mixed-use zone, um, where a commercial, you know, it should have a commercial, um, or it does have an existing commercial use on it, and so making the suggestion that, um, allowing for existing commercial parcels to continue that way, without requiring the second element, um, and then the property directly adjacent to I fifteen. This has also come up because of some issues, um, one of them being the Stephen Henninger Building. This is, that building is like a super, it's an eyesore, and it's a super tough place to be able to develop because of there's not a second, you know, access, so what can go in there is limited, but there's more options if it's just a completely commercial.
I say we bring the water slides back.
I know, the water slide was really cool, and I forced to go.
Pop golf, isn't it supposed to be coming?
That's in Marriott.
That'd be a great location, was that?
That's in Marriott Sladeville.
Oh, okay, I've heard rumors.
Just on the north side of twelfth street on the west side of the river, well, west side of nineteen hundred.
Oh, okay.
But the water slide was awesome.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
But like right now, um, this is a parcel that's directly adjacent to I fifteen, and it is, you know, it, it's tough. It's tough to try to, um, get two different elements, um, with these, these parcels that are directly adjacent to I fifteen. And so that's why these changes, um, have been, um, suggested.
I make a motion to enter public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Hepworth and a second, was it Commissioner Reed? Okay, to enter public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, all right, and looks like, any opposed? Okay, we are in public hearing, if anyone has any comments, questions. Be brave, come up to the microphone. Crickets, so with that.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, leave public hearing. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Galt, a second by Commissioner Hepworth, we'll leave public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Okay, we are now out of public hearing, so on to item number twelve, to discussion, to discuss, our discussion and action on the public hearing. Any other further questions?
I just had one question, and it says any parcel that has an existing commercial building in mixed-use zone. That means as of the date that this is adopted?
Yes.
Okay, just checking, I thought so, but I thought I'd ask.
Would it be prudent to add that language? I always figure a policy where you have to ask what it means needs a clarifying statement.
Well, in my case, I always have to ask what it means, so, that could be all policies.
It, unless it specifically states that it's retroactive, it isn't retroactive.
Well, while we're talking about that particular sentence or that particular paragraph, I have a concern, and I kind of, um, dislike putting additional language in things, uh, for, for specific instances, and, and I, and perhaps if I knew more information about what led to these proposed changes, you know, it says, uh, brought to the attention of the staff that there's things, what kind of, what kind of situations precipitated this? You know, I'd, I'd really like a little more insight into that.
So for the existing commercial, um, use, the, the one thing that, the one instance that I cited in there, tearing down a service station and building another one with a drive-through restaurant, there is, um, a current proposal, um, to do that, and it's over on twenty-first street on the west side of I fifteen, um, so you have Darren Bado's trailers, then you have that, the storage bay, and then like next to, just right in that same area is an old service station that really needs to be torn down, um. If they tear it down and build another one with a drive-through restaurant, it'll change the commercial, um, use of it. The other issue that we're currently looking at is, there's a house that's right in front of those storage bays, same sort of thing, they took that house and remodeled it, it was a, uh, basically an office management, they're using the house as an office management, and they want to make it into, um, like, not a salon, but kind of, so that people could do like nails, or do massages, or do, um, that sort of thing in it. So it's not, you know, it's not intensifying the use, but it's a different use, and again, because of the way that our current code is written, you, they'd need to have a second element, and it just doesn't. You, they'd need to have a second element and it just doesn't make any sense, so those are the two very specific, um, instances with that. When it comes to the property directly adjacent to I fifteen. Um, the developer who did the the, um, master development agreement for. The property just adjacent to, um, the Stephen Henninger building. Is finding that, um, building apartments there as outlined in the, um, MDA. Doesn't make any sense and so they're trying to find different uses. But it proposed a different use for that and amend the MDA. One of them was, um, having it be completely commercial, there's a, um. There is a commercial business that has approached them about possibly, um, building there. And the other one, um, had to do with, you know, townhomes. And they'd have to have, you know, if they built the townhomes, they'd have to come in, ask for an amendment to the MDA and. Have the the different, the two different elements, so that really wouldn't be applicable. But the possibility of, you know, would just commercial be better for some of these, um. Directly adjacent to I fifteen, especially because of access issues on either side of I fifteen. That's what the, that's what precipitated both of these changes.
Okay. Okay, thank, yeah, thank you for that, and I think that kind of illustrates. My concern about unintended consequences when we do these things because. When I think about that, I think about, we've got a moderate income housing plan. And and we're touting some of the things we're doing with particularly mixed use in that, uh, moderate income housing plan. And then we go and eliminate housing. And and is there effect on our now on our moderate income housing plan and and how do we deal with that? And so that's kind of my concern about making changes like this is what's the consequence down the line? And and you mentioned apartments, doesn't make sense to put apartments in there. But maybe wants to put townhomes in there and I'm like, yeah, you know. That causes me concern as well that now we're going from from. What would be higher density housing to to townhomes and how does that affect? Our moderate income housing plan, so. So those are the kinds of concerns that that, uh, that I have when we start. Um, making specific changes and and maybe that's okay and all well and fine, but. But it's a concern I have and also when I read through F, it says any parcel that has an existing commercial building. And mixed use zone, well, that's. I I think it needs to say if we're gonna adopt that, any parcel that has only. An existing commercial building and a mixed use zone, because the way it's writ-written, that would allow. Anybody that has two elements currently to to back out and just go to to a single, uh, single. Commercial use. So so I would say that that any parcel that currently has only an existing commercial building and mixed use zone. Is not required to have two or more of the listed elements. Does that make sense?
It does. And something that, um, to add to that, something that Stephen just, um, brought to my attention is in the second sentence. Where it says, however, if the commercial use changes, it cannot be more a more intensive use than what was previously existed. In the example that I gave about the service station and then the service station being torn down. And building another one with the drive-through restaurant, that that could be interpreted as a more intensive use. But the, I mean, really, the the intent is. Making sure it's just compliant with the C one, C two zones.
Yeah, and and that was kind of my next question, I had no idea what what more intensive use even means. And and I would think that, you know, if it's commercial and it meets C one, C two currently. And and that's what we're shooting for, then, you know, I I think we could stick with that.
So I, yeah, I I agree and I think that we should just take out that phrase and so then it just says. If the commercial use changes, it has to be a permitted or conditional use as listed in C one and C two zones.
Yeah, I would agree because I have no idea what a more intensive use is. So maybe go, that that would to me would be like going from commercial to manufacturing. Now, that's a more intense use, but to go from a gas station to a. Gas station and drive-through sushi bar, yeah, I don't know if that's more intensive or not.
So am I correct in in thinking that the only mixed use zoning we have left is around twenty first street and I fifteen?
It's, that's not, um, there are several other places in the city.
Okay.
Um, and and they're weird places because they'll have MDAs. But then they'll have this extra, these extra parcels that are not a part of the MDA. And so I know Stevens had to be looking at a couple of them that how do you deal with the density? You know, somebody comes in and wants density in a mixed use zone and it's not part of that MDA. We're kind of in a weird spot that way that we're trying to figure out what, how to deal with that, so that may be. You know, in the future, something that needs to come back to you guys over. Um, but yeah, there's, somebody else had called, another commercial. Use had called, had called about, they wanted to put something purely commercial. You know, it was like long four thousand south or something like that. But because it was in a mixed use and not in a development agreement, you have these two elements that is an issue. You know, and and that's, we want to encourage commercial.
Yeah.
You know, especially along these big streets, but having it be. Um, and some of the problem with twenty first street is not only is it currently zoned mixed use, but on the general plan, it is, um. Proposed to be mixed use also, so they can't even re, you know, rezone out of it.
Yeah.
And that's caused some, some issues as to how to, you know, try to deal with it.
And then just, uh, from a planning perspective of long commercial along the I fifteen corridor, I get. I don't love putting residential right up against, um, an interstate. There's been a lot of studies that show living next to that noise and air pollution can be detrimental to. Your health or have negative health side effects, so I agree, I think this is the rights or going in the, you know, taking a step in the right direction and providing. Some buffering between residential, um, units and such a high capacity transportation corridor. And so I I generally speaking, I think, I think our mixed use zone probably needs a larger look at. And how we really want to approach mixed use and what our goals with the ordinance are. But I think the two, um, proposals that are in front of us are steps in the right direction to resolve some immediate problems we're having now. And then I do think we should take some, look at the code in general.
Yeah.
Any other questions, concerns? Discussion, I think we've. Kind of brought up some good points, but this looks like it works. For now, to kind of get us where we need to be.
So I have the two changes that. In F. The one that the, the two that George has, um, brought up.
Could you go over theirs again, please?
So, um, in F, my understanding was any parcel that currently only has an existing commercial building. Was that, was that the language, George, or was there?
Yes, ma'am, I would suggest it would say any parcel that currently has only an existing commercial building. Blah blah blah. Would be the proper language there.
The only in the wrong spot, so I apologize. Um, so any parcel that currently has only an existing commercial. Building in a mixed use zone is not required to have two or more of the listed elements, even if the commercial use. Changes to a different compliant commercial use. However, if the commercial use changes, and this is where we took out the other part. So it just states it has to be a permitted or conditional use as listed in C one. And C two zones and is subject to the architectural landscaping and other standards outlined in the West Haven Code.
Everybody in agreement to that? Feel good about that? It's hard, we don't have a written copy, I can't strike out things when I'm reading here, so. George, how would you feel about making that motion?
I can make that motion.
If everybody's ready for that point, I was gonna say, then you can get it right.
What Amy said.
Yeah, you can just say what Amy said or you're welcome to read that verbatim if you wrote it all down by chance, but.
Okay, I make a motion that we, uh, approve, uh, the changes to the mixed use ordinance. With the exception that paragraph F shall read. Any parcel that currently has only an existing commercial building in a mixed use zone is not required to have two or more of the listed elements. Even if the commercial use changes to a different compliant commercial use. However, if the commercial use changes. It has to be permitted or conditional use as listed in C one and C two zones, et cetera.
Okay, can I have a second?
I would like to thank George for his thoroughness and second the motion.
Thank you.
Um, real quick.
Yes.
Um, George, are you willing to amend it, your motion, so that it's recommend approval to the City Council?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Amy. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Lamar and a second by Commissioner Galt, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed?
Great job, George.
Thank you, motion passes. Thank you for all of your, um, input discussions. Okay, moving on to. Let's see, public hearing on item number thirteen, to solicit public input to consider an amendment to the standards of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance.
Hopefully, this is a lot simpler.
Yeah, I read through the description, this looks pretty straightforward.
Um.
And had no idea that we had to report them.
Yeah.
I'm currently building one and I have no.
Well, that's. On your current property or on your?
Well, it's Weaver County.
Yeah, well, that's gonna be Weaver County.
Yeah, but I was, it's interesting the differences, I mean, looking at Weaver County, it's it, there's a few little differences, but go ahead, go ahead.
So yeah, it states the owner shall obtain a yearly license, business license from the city and shall report the monthly and annual rent amounts. To the city every year and before Alaka left, we had discussed wanting to remove this out of the code because we've. The city has never required anybody to get a yearly business license for an ADU and we've never required anyone to report. The monthly and annual rent amounts and it actually helps with our moderate income housing reporting that we're trying to make. ADUs easier to, um. You know, hoping with the housing.
Okay, thank you, any questions before we go into public hearing? With that.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into public hearing to solicit input to consider an amendment. To the standards of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Galt, a second by Commissioner Reed to enter public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Alright, we are now in public hearing, we welcome your input. That being how there isn't anyone online and there is not, we have one sole occupant who is staff, so.
I make a motion to exit public hearing.
Yeah, okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Hepworth to exit public hearing, can I get a second? Second by Commissioner Reed, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, any opposed? Okay, we are now out of public hearing, any further comment? Amy did a pretty good explanation and it makes sense and.
I think it's great.
I I have one question and and I looked through the ordinance and I couldn't find it, but, um. What I was looking for as far as requiring business licenses, but I I did find that. Short-term rentals are required to have a business license. Are apartment buildings and other rentals required to have a business license in our city?
Um, not long-term rentals, they're not, um, I don't believe that they're required, um. I'm not exactly sure about the part, the apartments. I don't know, Robyn might know better, she usually gets the applications in.
We usually get applications for all of them.
So they do, they are required to have a business license?
They are.
Makes sense.
Good question, George. Alright, any other questions, discussion on the ADU ordinance? Alright, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we recommend to the City Council to amend the ADU ordinance by removing the requirement for a business license. And monthly and annual reporting of rent amounts.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Reed and a second by Commissioner Galt, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. And moving on to agenda item number fifteen, it's just our meeting schedule for next year.
Anybody wanna work the night before Thanksgiving or Christmas Eve?
Yeah, those are gonna be my two comments, is that's typically when meetings will fall, but.
We usually take those off.
Yep.
Yeah. Yep, so yeah, I didn't even realize those were on there still, yeah, we usually just have one meeting in November and one in December. With that, we would be adjourned until January eighth would be our first meeting and we. So it looks like we're, I have a work session then, I guess we'll have work sessions until we're told otherwise, is that? We'll assume there's work sessions.
The asterix just dictates that it says as needed.
As needed, okay. Did we wanna have a scheduled work session for our first one in January or is there any need for that or?
I I do think we should have a work session, I don't know if I'll be ready by January eighth, um. One thing we're looking at is how to proceed with our general plan. And I really want the planning commission's input, I'm just not sure if by January eighth I'm gonna be ready to kind of present some ideas.
One, one comment I have on that is, would it behoove us that we have a city planner in place when we discuss the general?
Well, there's, I don't think you will be ready for, on January eighth, and the reason why I'm saying that is because. We're still, we're supposed to be interviewing the long-term planner, so they're, uh, the city put out an RFQ for a long-term planner.
Good.
Um, and it's narrowed down and we're doing, um, interviews next week regarding that and they're the ones. My understanding is that they're the ones who are really going to be helping with the the general plan, um, and so. I mean, I, I think January, well, the City Council is not gonna meet until after the first planning commission meeting, so they won't. Have awarded that contract until after and I think you really need to have them here, you know, to.
So more likely February at the soonest.
Probably.
To have that discussion, okay.
Yeah, we'll keep the planning commission up to date, once we have a better idea, um, I'll, we'll schedule a work session where we can meet and kind of go through what we wanna do.
Alright, and if you ever see any upcoming agenda items or any time that, some education that would help, I think we're all. Open to, you know, just to kind of enlighten us on anything that you see as maybe beneficial or maybe. I think sometimes our procedural things, we've kind of updated things a little bit and so if you see things that you can maybe bring from previous. Experiences, we're open to to any of that, so if you see fit for that, even if it's at five thirty, if we come a little early and. Kind of, you know, maybe go over some things that maybe we could improve on or learn more about, so. We haven't had very many, uh, work sessions, but sometimes they're beneficial, especially pertinent to, you know, upcoming agenda items that could be. So far, we really have, this is the first time we've been on two pages for a long time, so it's kind of reminiscent, Amy. I'm kind of feeling a little.
I was thinking about that as to, you know, what, five public hearings and I was like.
Yeah, we used to do three pagers, I remember having twenty-four agenda items and yeah.
It was painful.
Those were the days, yes, it was, so, okay.
Could I ask if there are any other dates on here that people saw as problematic or? If they collided with holidays or any of that?
I didn't see any by holidays, I know there's some that are not convenient for me, but I can provide enough notice that to make sure we have quorum, so.
And I do appreciate the notice that you're gonna be in um, online, like that's kind of helps to kind of know, because if we have. The majority online and maybe two, you know, it's just kind of good to know so we can prepare and know who's gonna be in person. So I appreciate um, you guys letting us know. Um, yeah, I, with those, with only the changes in November and December, I think.
One of the things that I run into frequently with planning commissions is spring and fall break. I don't know when they fall in our school district. I'm here, a little bit new to the area.
Some of us are too old to worry about.
Well, well, I'm not, Jeff, so let me look that up.
Yeah, Melinda would know. Who, Melinda is now, are you vice principal at Roy Junior? Or principal, principal?
I am the principal.
And as a former alumni of Roy Junior, I'm very proud to toot your horn.
Is, is that?
Thank you.
Is that something you wanna be congratulated for?
I, I think it's, it's a congratulation.
I think so too.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, it looks like it's Monday, March thirty-first, that first week of April for Weaver County.
And then fall break is usually like fifteenth to the seventeenth of October-ish.
I'm looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five and it's showing the first week of April. Not the week of March. You said the first week of March.
Oh, no, Monday, March thirty-first through the first week of April.
Okay, maybe I miss, unheard of.
Sorry, I'm not sure.
Robin?
And. So we're good.
Do they have twenty-five, twenty-six out yet?
Um. Let's see. We usually run it the same week. We have it, I don't think it's published. So it's, it's, it is actually on the district website.
Oh, is it?
And usually those, I mean, doesn't impact.
It's usually Thursday, Friday is the fall.
Yeah.
Spring break's the long one, fall breaks is the, just a couple of days. They might throw a teacher prep day in or early out on that.
It looks like it should be the sixteenth and seventeenth of twenty-five. October sixteenth and seventeenth. Or sorry, let me go back to that. Yep, that's, those are my tentative dates.
Okay, so I don't really see any conflicts. And we can. Oh, I didn't know he was gone, but. Yeah. Okay, well. With that, I.
I could slowly make a motion. To um, what do we do? Accept the planning commission meeting schedule. With the exception of November twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-five. Which is listed as twenty-four, so that was a mistake anyway. And also December twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-five.
I will second that.
Yeah, Robin brings up the twenty-third of July. Does the city have that day off? Like the workers?
We do have the twenty-four off.
But the twenty-third is business as usual. I know a lot of businesses that are now more global are not recognizing the twenty-fourth as a holiday just because it's more of a local.
Ultimately, ultimately, we'll have to determine whether or not we have a quorum.
Yeah, if people are gonna be out of town, then we.
Because people are out of town, then we'll have to.
We can adjust on the fly like we usually do.
Yeah, so I say we leave that, we stick with. Your commissioner reads things and.
Is that a second?
It is a second.
So, one thing I just noticed, the agenda just lists this as a discussion item and not as an action item, so.
Oh.
That's an oversight on my part and we'll, we'll just bring it back in January for official adoption.
Retract my motion.
Good discussion though, we do have, so then um, we'll bring it back with the amended, amended schedule without the December and November dates. And then I think it's really helpful, if you know in advance that you're not gonna be here and if we do have. You know, a majority that's not gonna be here and we can at least do that in advance, that will help Robin a lot to be able to know that. Um, she can note, if she has to notice a meeting or a public hearing. And we aren't gonna have a quorum, but that, I can't think that that's ever happened that I've been in here.
Since I've been around.
There's been some close calls, but we've been able to get a quorum.
What do you think about item sixteen there, Chair?
I'm really ready for a motion on.
I make a motion to adjourn, second.
Okay, motion, okay, I feel like an auctioneer sometimes, but I'm getting your names right, I'm practicing. We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Hepworth and a motion and a second from Commissioner Reed, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
Thanks you guys.
Thanks everyone, thanks for your attendance.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.